Bienvenidos a todos. Estoy muy emocionada de tenerlos aquí. Bienvenidos a la reunión de Comité de Comunidad East Central y a este debate. Primero que nada, un agradecimiento especial a la escuela McGillis por hospedarnos esta noche. Un agradecimiento especial a nuestros candidatos que se han acordado de venir esta noche. A todos ustedes por venir. También quiero presentar a nuestra equipo de liderazgo, tanto de East Central como de aquí. Si pudiera, ¿podría levantar la cabeza el board de East Central? Y también a la equipo de liderazgo de la ciudad central, del Comité de Comunidad Downtown. Y también, ¿quién me falta? Distrito Midtown. ¿Jen, estás aquí? También un agradecimiento especial a Randall por acompañarnos como moderador. Tengo un par de temas rápidos para East Central, porque esta es nuestra reunión trimestral regular. Solo un rápido. La reunión de la Comisión de Planificación está el 25 de septiembre para la rezona. Para cualquiera que esté interesado en eso, si ustedes quieren más información sobre eso, pueden contactarme en nuestro correo electrónico. Y también hemos establecido una fuerza de trabajo especial para lidiar con las partidas extremas que han estado ocurriendo en nuestro vecindario. Y tenemos un tiempo el 28, donde nos enfrentaremos contra Portland, bueno, Oregon. Así que será un gran juego y una noche de partidos grandes, así para las partidas extremas. También hay información sobre eso en nuestra página Facebook de la ECC. Quiero hablar rápidamente sobre el formato de esta noche. Sé que estamos construyendo esto como un debate, pero en realidad es más de una discusión pensada y una serie de preguntas con cada candidato. Y vamos a dibujar su orden aquí con la camiseta en breve. Y luego, Randall va a preguntar, y le hemos pedido que sea bastante enfocado, y limitar las cosas si necesitamos avanzar a preguntas adicionales con cada candidato. Así que cada candidato tiene 20 minutos en los que vamos a hacer preguntas, y estamos tratando de ser lo único que sea posible con cada candidato. Debido a que solo hay 20 minutos para cada candidato, estamos pidiendo que no hagamos aplausos entre ellos. Podemos aplaudir al final de los 20 si les gusta, pero entre ellos queremos dejar mucho tiempo a cada candidato posible. Así que sin más, oh, tengo una otra cosa. Voy a hacer esto muy rápido. El estándar para East Central, tenemos algunos reglamentos fundamentales, y voy a repetirlos rápidamente. Creemos en respeto y civildad. Nos importa a todos, nuestros vecinos, vecindarios, ciudadanos y presentadores. Estamos en consonancia con nuestros valores centrales y negociamos ganar siempre posible. Todos tienen derecho a ser entendidos y oídos. Y tomaremos el tiempo necesario. Consideraremos todos los puntos de vista. Pero especialmente en este tipo de situación con candidatos y una elección, esperamos el respeto y la amabilidad mutuamente. Podemos discordar sin ser discordantes. Y luego les pedimos que se involucren, y estamos contentos de que estén aquí esta noche. Esperamos que se involucren, si no lo están haciendo todavía, en su comité de comunidad, porque ahí es donde suceden las cosas y es lo que hace la diferencia. Ahora voy a presentar a un viejo amigo, Christian Harrison, quien presentará a Randall.
Buenas noches a todos, y gracias por venir. Yo seré muy rápido. Todos conocen a Randall Carlisle, y probablemente les ame tanto como yo. He tenido la fortuna de conocerlo desde más de una década ahora. Aunque pasé tiempo con él todas las noches cuando estaba en las noticias durante 23 años en la cadena 4. Ahora es el director especialista de comunicaciones en Odyssey House, una organización increíble con 23 ubicaciones en todo el valle, sirviendo a gente que está luchando con problemas de uso de sustancias. Y esta noche, si realmente disfrutan de su voz, deberían saber que pueden obtener más de ella, porque es uno de los narradores de la show Rocky Horror Picture Show que se puso en el Theatre Company Pioneer. Así que con esa recomendación brillante, me gustaría invitar a nuestra persona con la camiseta.
Eso no es uno de mis planes de fama. Está saliendo más tarde este mes en el Theatre Company, y es una buena show.
Así que estamos a punto de seleccionar el orden para las festividades de esta noche para el comité de la ciudad. Sí, esto es como Harry Potter. ¿Qué número tienes?
Tengo el número uno.
Y ahí vamos. Muy bien, te pasa a ti, y Ana es primero.
Todo lo que puedo decir, y he dicho esto toda mi carrera, es que no disparen al mensajero. Las preguntas que se han preparado vino de las diversas reuniones de comités de la ciudad con interacciones con la gente que vive en esos ubicaciones geográficas específicas. Así que estas no son mis preguntas, solo voy a tratar de mantenerlo avanzando. Así que Ana, ven. Ana Valdemotos es la nueva persona del comité de la ciudad del distrito 4. Bienvenida, Ana.
Gracias.
Dado un significante decreto en la adquisición de estudiantes, el Distrito de la Ciudad de Salt Lake, si ustedes saben, está estudiando cuáles escuelas deberían cerrarse. Benin y Losatch, ambos del distrito 4, están estudiando la cerradura. La pregunta es, ¿cómo attracting y mantener familias con niños en Salt Lake?
Bueno, gracias a todos. Buenas noches, soy Ana Valdemotos. He estado sirviendo a ustedes con orgullo desde 2019. Han visto a través de COVID, el desorden social, los terremotos, los tormentos. Déjame decirles por qué soy la mejor opción para continuar siendo mi miembro del comité y lo que estamos haciendo para hacer lo que me preguntaron. Así que fui elegida como presidenta de la RDA por mis compañeros, y la RDA se encarga del financiamiento que entra en la vivienda. Y durante mucho tiempo, Salt Lake City se centró en financiar casas de una habitación de 1 habitación. Así que muchas de las cosas que ves en el centro de la ciudad, probablemente tiene la intervención de Salt Lake City para unidades de vivienda accesibles. Sin embargo, sabía que esto estaba sucediendo, la pregunta que me preguntaron. Así que pedí a los miembros del comité que cambiaran nuestra política para ahora comenzar a financiar unidades de vivienda de tamaño familiar que sean accesibles, así que tres, cuatro habitaciones de cuatro habitaciones. Y también les he pedido que prioricen que hacemos propiedad de la casa accesible para familias jóvenes, para el trabajo y para los jóvenes profesionales que no podrán permitirse una casa por mucho tiempo. Y esa es la forma en que podemos intervenir como ciudadanos para que nuestros vecinos puedan empezar a construir riqueza de esa manera. Otra cosa que hemos hecho es, y saben, saber lo que está sucediendo en nuestro distrito y nuestros números en términos de familias y cómo perdieron muchas familias a los suburbs, fue traer algo a la ciudad y al distrito 4, algo que hacer. En este momento, dependemos mucho en nuestros bars y restaurantes, y hemos hecho un gran trabajo. Y sé que ha taken quite a while, but now we have places to go eat and be merry and be, you know, and party, but what we haven't focused on for a long time is amenities for families. Y es por eso que mi insistencia y he sido adamanto en financiar espacio abierto, como el Parque Pioneer. El Parque Pioneer, cuando empecé siendo miembro del comité, solo tenía unos 3 millones de dólares para ser asignados. Y ahora tengo que luchar de la mano a la mano para obtener esos 3.4 millones de dólares en impuestos de impacto para el Parque Pioneer, incluso con mis aliados cercanos, para hacerlos entender que necesitábamos empezar a pensar en invertir en nuestros parques. Así que los conseguí, pude conseguirlos para los 3.4 millones de dólares. Y en nuestro último acuerdo de espacio abierto, conseguí al Parque Pioneer 10 millones de dólares. El año siguiente, la construcción empieza. Gracias por participar y decirnos lo que quieren ver en el Parque Pioneer. Pero ese parque, lo vamos a usar de tal manera que nunca habrán soñado. Y el centro de los agricultores, podías estar en un entorno como ese, you know, weekly. Otra cosa que nos enfocamos fue en el Tofer Park y Richmond Park. Y este pasado verano, pudimos obtener dinero gratis, pude obtener dinero gratis de Home Depot. Teníamos nuevas plantas, teníamos nuevo molde, teníamos nuevo pintor. Si no les gusta el trabajo de pintura en las cosas, llamadme como miembro del comité, pinté. Así que pueden venir a hablar conmigo si hice un buen trabajo sobre pintar, you know, las sillas. Pero obtuvimos dos millones de dólares en inversión para estos dos parques. Quiero asegurarme de que mientras estamos preparando para traer a la ciudad a la ciudad, las familias tengan un lugar para ir, para llevar a sus hijos, sentirse seguros y cómodos en sus propios amenazas.
Y esas son todas buenas cosas para atrapar a las familias con niños, pero es una solución a largo plazo. Así que a corto plazo, ustedes no tienen ningún control sobre cerrar esas escuelas. ¿Tienes algún input en todo?
You know, my input is that there are a lot of factors why people have left downtown, why they're looking at closing, but it's also a behavioral change. Déjame decirles por qué. You know, a long time ago, people left to the suburbs because we as Americans like our houses and our yards. And that's just the truth, that's what happens. But I know that will change because we Americans also like our cars very much. And when I moved here in 2000, when the trucks opened, and I was a student at the U and I did not have a car to drive around, I had to take trucks. And sometimes I was the only person riding this brand-new $300 million trucks line on 4th South. Nobody else was doing it. And guess what, 10 years later, it's packed. We need more. We have one going to the airport. We have that line up and down every day packed with people. So I know behaviors will change as long as we start planting this seed today because people will end up wanting to leave downtown. It's closer to their airport, it's a nicer city, and they will be accustomed to living in smaller spaces. Because if they really care about the environment and all of the other things that we talk about, they will be here. And we're going to be ready for that.
Algunos residentes del distrito 4, creo que afecta a la gente más cerca de la universidad, creen que Salt Lake City está accediendo órdenes de ruido significativos. ¿Cómo serían las órdenes de ruido?
Gracias, díganme todo el poder, condado. Díganme el poder de cuidar de esto. Vivo en la ciudad y lo escucho. Escucho los coches, escucho las fiestas, escucho incluso nuestros eventos en la propiedad de la ciudad. Es fuerte, lo entiendo, lo entiendo. Y estamos trabajando muy duro con el condado para llegar a mejores soluciones y incluso con las organizaciones para ver cómo podemos mitigarlo. Obviamente, la ciudad es la ciudad, es un área urbana. Así que no tendremos la capacidad de tener una ciudad tranquila porque ese no es el punto de la ciudad. Eso es por lo que todos queremos vivir más cerca juntos, somos fuertes, queremos la actividad. Pero esos ruidos, sí, lo entiendo.
Vivo en las torres americanas, y aprecio el hecho de que el centro de Galleys shuts down the music at 10 o'clock. Porque voy a dormir a las 9, así que... ¿Qué debe hacer la ciudad reducir el uso de agua?
Hemos hecho muchas cosas. Saben que somos líderes en políticas de conservación de agua en el estado. Hay gente llamándonos, hey, ¿cómo hiciste eso? Realmente nos importa en Salt Lake City. Y ahora estamos haciendo una auditoría para ver qué más supuestamente debemos hacer para conservar más agua. Just passed an ordinance where we limit the water usage for new industries. Y así que estamos allí. You know, obviously, even if all of us could do our best, we still need the help of the state and the rest of the cities to follow through with their ordinances and efforts. But we lead, guys, trust me, to the point that we become annoying to the legislature, so that you know.
Voy a hacer esto a los candidatos, porque creo que es una pregunta interesante. Como saben, las elecciones de este verano se llevan bajo un sistema de votación de rango. Entre los candidatos presentes, obviamente, ustedes votarán por usted mismo como primeros. ¿Quién sería su segunda opción y por qué?
Wow, eso es difícil. Eso es difícil, ¿realmente quieres que responda eso? Dios mío, Randall.
Voy a hacerlo a todos.
Bien, bien, bien. Bueno, you know, I am obviously the most qualified and the most experienced, not only because I am a city planner, I have a master's degree in city planning, but I'm also a small business owner. And I work for Salt Lake City. And I know how to be a bureaucrat and how to be a business owner and how to make things happen faster and how to push for faster movement in our bureaucracy and more efficiency. And that gives me extreme advantage over my opponents. However, if I was you, I would look for a person that has experience and understand how the world works because of their own life experiences and also because of their work through the years. So when you look at the three candidates, we have made a lot of progress already with somebody that is the most qualified and you probably want somebody that understands at least at a minimum of what's happening and not somebody completely new that has accomplished, you know, not a lot, if any, you know, to understand how the world works.
Así que ustedes no ponen el nombre?
¿Solo decirlo? Muy bien, gracias. Muy bien, solo voy a dejarlo así, perdón.
Bueno, voy a hacerlo a todos, así que...
Y ellos pueden llamarme, está bien. Ellos pueden nombrarme.
¿Cuál es? Mucha gente, you know, ve a la gente que está haciendo cosas con el jefe y el comité de la ciudad. ¿Cuál es el rol del comité de la ciudad?
¿Puedes repetirlo? Lo siento, la primera parte, no puedo escuchar.
La gente que refiere al jefe y al comité de la ciudad, ¿cuál es el rol del comité de la ciudad?
Gracias. Dos ramas.
Yo odio la última pregunta, pero vayan.
Dos ramas, muy diferentes, que tienen que trabajar juntos. Una es la rama legislativa, la que produce reglas y pone presupuestos. Busca el dinero que entra para pagar las operaciones de la ciudad, más lo que hacemos. La rama ejecutiva ejecuta. Así que tanto como me gustaría decirle a la rama ejecutiva qué hacer hoy, cuando ustedes me llaman con un problema, no puedo forzar esa rama porque esa es la línea fina que vamos, que va con nuestro mundo. Y así que, para que ustedes sepan, hablé con ustedes sobre presupuestos y ustedes me preguntaron, Ana, ¿por qué no está sucediendo esto? ¿Cómo podemos hacer esto más eficiente? ¿O hay una forma? Así que cuando me llamas, puedo preguntarle al gobierno, ¿has cuidado de esto? Porque recuerdo que yo presupuse. Ustedes me pidieron un presupuesto para cuidar de X, y usted dijo que iban a hacerlo. Así que ahora, ¿puede decirme si está siendo hecho? Y ellos pueden responderme sobre cómo creen que es mejor hacerlo y ejecutarlo. Lo que no puedo decirle a esa rama directamente es cómo manejar su negocio diario. Pero ciertamente, empujamos duro, hasta el punto de ser molesto.
He visto algunas críticas diciendo, ustedes parecen ser un estampador de madera para lo que el jefe dice.
Correcto, así que déjenme, sí, exacto, déjenme decirles por qué. Hay una diferencia entre ser un estampador de madera y ser alguien que es razonable y puede sentarse con alguien que no está de acuerdo y llegar a un mejor resultado versus luchar, versus no moverse en absoluto. Aunque algunas personas, quizás ustedes tengan que luchar por esto a todo costo. Eso no es como funciona, nunca ha funcionado, de lo que soy consciente en cualquier relación, cuando ustedes solo hacen lo que quieren hacer y decirle a la otra persona, llamar nombres o decirle qué hacer. Así que lo que hago en lugar de eso, hablar sobre cómo más podemos hacer esto. ¿Hay alguna forma en que podemos hacerlo de otra manera? Y, por ejemplo, hablamos de auditorías. Así que, y especialmente con East Central, espero que ustedes recuerden cuando tuvimos que, desafortunadamente, mirar a subir los impuestos. Y como empresariao pequeño, entiendo que cuando estás trabajando en el negocio, no puedes trabajar en el negocio. Necesitas otro conjunto de ojos para ayudarte a ver dónde estás invirtiendo y no dando tanto retorno. Dónde deberías invirtir porque está dando más retorno y dónde es más eficiente. Y así es como vi esa pregunta cuando se me estaba presentando, los costes están aumentando y necesitamos subir los impuestos. Así que como empresariao pequeño, entiendo, los costes son mayores, la inflación, que solo surgió de una pandemia, lo entiendo. Pero ¿qué si también empezamos a hacer auditorías? Para que todos entendamos cuáles son nuestras deficiencias. Y si podemos ahorrar dinero, podemos poner ese dinero en algo que sea eficiente, que esté funcionando para nuestros vecinos. Y recibí mucho retroalimentación en la reunión del comité. No estoy segura de si lo han visto. Recibí mucho retroalimentación, recibí muchos ojos sucios de mis compañeros y del gobierno, diciendo, ¿qué están diciendo? ¿Quieren volver a las auditorías? Sí, quiero volver a las auditorías. Y ellos dicen, bueno, esto es malo para los empleados. Los empleados pensarán que ustedes no confían en ellos, que están haciendo algo mal. Y no tiene nada que ver con eso. Tiene que ver con la eficiencia, es sobre aprender lo que no sabemos y lo que podríamos hacer mejor. Esta es la mejor práctica, y eso es lo que hice. Y así que eso no es retroalimentación, lo siento, eso no es estampar de madera, eso es retroalimentación. Así que al final de esa reunión, y vine a hablar contigo, dije, ¿qué piensan ustedes? Necesito su feedback porque entiendo los costes, también los mayores costes, pero también entiendo que probablemente necesitamos mirar esto más profundamente. Recibí muchos correos electrónicos, así que gracias, ustedes fueron divididos. Así que le dije a mis miembros del comité y al gobierno, you know, if you guys don't help me and accept this audit request year after year from now on randomly, I will be the only council member that will vote no. Then you guys can go explain to all of my neighbors and your neighbors and the media why you don't want to do audits. Guess what, estamos haciendo auditorías ahora mismo, gracias.
¿Qué propones, si es algo, cambiar nuestro código de zona?
Repitelo de nuevo, lo siento, me quedé atrapada con mis...
Afecta especialmente a este distrito, porque estamos tratando de mantenerlo...
¿Cuál fue la pregunta, Randall, lo siento?
¿Necesitamos cambiar nuestro código de zona? Y si es así, ¿cómo propones cambiarlo?
Bueno, you know, el distrito 4 es cambiado y evolucionado una y otra vez. Creo que hemos hecho un buen trabajo en los zonas que tenemos. Hemos hecho los corredores transitivos. Hemos visto mucho crecimiento. Somos en la vanguardia de crecimiento, you know, en el estado y, you know, en la ciudad y el estado. Y una de las cosas recientes que he hecho debido a ver cómo está el crecimiento en Salt Lake City es mirar nuestros distritos de zona de la ciudad de la ciudad. Durante mucho tiempo, nosotros como planes, cuando era un plan, pensábamos que la ciudad iba a ser esencialmente cuatro o seis bloques en un área central, y esa era la única forma en que podríamos construir edificios más altos. Y todo lo demás tenía que ir así. Y no había otra forma de salir de eso, así es como las ciudades deben crecer. Bueno, ¿sabes qué? Estamos entre dos, you know, estamos un poco limitados con áreas geográficas. Ves montañas aquí, montañas allá. Así que no hay forma en que podamos continuar creciendo si no permitimos altura adicional en este distrito de la ciudad. No solo eso, como la ciudad está creciendo, está expandiéndose, está expandiéndose hasta la 8ª South. Y así que pasamos la altura adicional, you know, para más densidad y para más altura en la ciudad. Y ese área de transición, el distrito de zona que trabajé cuando era un plan de la ciudad, lo vamos a ajustar aquí y allá, especialmente porque hemos entendido que cuando creamos ese distrito de zona en 2008, nadie estaba construyendo nada. Así que fue una forma de atraer a la gente a construir más en la ciudad de Salt Lake. Recuerdo mirar, quizás hagamos, lo siento por llegar tan técnico en esto, pero quizás si la gente construye más vivienda a lo largo de estos corredores transitivos, entonces nuestro proceso de aplicación se procesará más rápido. You know, solo para incentivarlo porque nadie estaba construyendo nada. Y realmente fuimos adamantes en los supermercados y en el fondo. Ni siquiera sabíamos que, you know, las cosas iban a subir pero los supermercados en el fondo no subían tan rápido. Así que lo vamos a ajustar, pero estamos planeando intervenir de varias formas. Una es comenzar a mirar esos vacíos supermercados en la ciudad para detener las leases. Así que rentaremos esos supermercados y rentaremos a pequeños negocios que quizás son startups y necesitan espacio accesible para empezar su negocio. También estamos mirando, no nosotros, también estoy mirando en la atención de atención vacante, ya hablando con empresarios, con mis compañeros, nonprofits, con los trabajadores de oficinas para ver dónde más, cómo podemos intervenir, especialmente cuando tenemos tantos supermercados vacantes. ¿Podemos usar eso, you know, para la atención de atención también? ¿Es una posibilidad? Y creo que lo vamos a hacer.
No le gustó la pregunta que me preguntaste, así que la voy a dejar que le guste. Para aquellos que no saben, dijiste que eres un empresario pequeño. ¿Cuál es el nombre de tu negocio y qué haces? Y eso es una pregunta de baloncesto, así que...
Bien, propiedad de las mejores empanadas argentinas en 4ª South y 2ª East, el hueco en la pared. Propulsivamente estoy reutilizando un edificio antiguo para construir comunidad a través de eso, a través de la preservación histórica y no hacia, you know, un nuevo edificio. También propiedad de la cocina de cuarto, que es una cocina de incubador culinario donde ayudo a pequeños negocios empezar su negocio a tasas accesibles en una cocina comercial. Y también está en un viejo taller en el distrito 2 en Ploper Grove debido a eso, debido a mi pasión por el plan de la ciudad, por mantener el carácter del vecindario y también no gentrificar ciertos áreas.
Y la comida es muy buena.
Gracias, proben la empanada de lechuga.
Hagamos un aplauso para la gente de los muros.
Gracias.
Who drew number two? Clayton Squidner, bienvenida.
Gracias, ¿no puedo ir sin manos libres? O levantar el marco libre. Bien, vamos a la mesa.
Tengo esta sofisticada reloj.
Bien.
Es legítimo. Clayton, el distrito 4 es aproximadamente 24% ocupado. La mitad de la ciudad es aproximadamente el 45% de propiedad de la casa. Y el 65% de propiedad del país. ¿Cómo harías para crear más oportunidades de propiedad de la casa? Porque es difícil en la ciudad, esa es una de las cosas en la Comité de Comunidad Downtown que tenemos dificultades en hacer porque hay tantos negocios y tan pocas casas.
Buena pregunta para empezar. Voy a decir gracias por hacer esto, Randall, y gracias al Comité de Comunidad por invitarme. Y es genial ver tantas personas aquí en una especie de noche de octubre húmeda. Soy Clayton, vivo un par de bloques de aquí. He vivido en este distrito durante 30 años. Soy un padre, tu vecino y un serviente público de vida. Tengo una carrera de 30 años en servicio público, principalmente mucho de en las ciudades. Así que ese es el fondo que traigo a esta conversación. Te daré su pregunta en un segundo, pero quiero empezar con una historia rápida. Vine aquí hace 30 años, pero crecí en Las Vegas, y eso fue en los años 80. Las Vegas era en ese momento la ciudad más grande en América, y vivimos en la margen de la ciudad, estaba en una carretera sucia. Y recuerdo mirar por mi ventana y ver la ciudad venir hacia nuestra casa rápido. Era tan rápido que podía sentirlo. Cada mes, los tañones de luz, los tañones de señal estaban acercándose, las carreteras pavimentadas estaban acercándose. Fue loco. Así que por la calle de mi casa estaba un granjido sucio donde huivíamos a cazar gatos y a caminar bicicleta sucia. Había autos rostados. Cuando estaba en la segunda clase, recibimos un boleto y decía, ven a la ruptura. Vamos a tener un parque justo por la calle de tu casa. Y como adolescente, eso es como un sueño hecho realidad. Había noches sin sueño esperando esta ruptura. Me mostraron, había gente en ruedas bonitas, sonriendo, cámaras, eslabas doradas. No sabía qué es una eslabas doradas. Y el tipo sonriendo me acercó, me abrió la cabeza y dijo, vaya a tomar una eslabas doradas. Así que adolescente, la agarré sobre el hombro, flash de las cámaras, you know, aplausos. Y tan pronto como ese evento terminó, todo estaba fuera. Y un año pasó, tres años pasaron. Cuando era un adolescente, escribí en el periódico para mi bandera de matrimonio y Boy Scouts, y dije, ¿dónde está mi parque? Al tiempo que rompieron la ruptura de ese parque, tenía 17 años, tenía una licencia de conductor, una amiga, iniciaba una banda. Estaba en mi camino hasta Salt Lake para ir a la universidad. Así que la razón por la que les cuento esa historia es porque las decisiones que tomamos aquí en la ciudad tienen efecto generacional. Y ahora estamos aquí en Salt Lake City, que es una de las ciudades más grandes en el país. And now we're here in Salt Lake City, which is the fastest, one of the fastest growing cities in the country. And what are we doing to keep our livability up and make the city a better place for the next generation? So they look back at us and the decisions we make today and say, man, they really have their stuff together. They saw the growth, they invested in the people. That's when I decided to run for office. I put it under the, the brand people first. That's my whole approach to how I see this office and how I'll approach it as a city council person. So I just wanted to share that to you and that's really my approach to this, people first. And when we talk about people, we talk about the way we're growing and we talk about people who want to come here and invest here. And that's what you're talking about, right? For purchase housing, right? The way we're growing is unsustainable. It's monolithic and it's not diverse. We have no for purchase opportunities being had in District Four. And that used to be, you know, people say, I don't like the condos, I don't like, we're not building condos. Those used to be, that was your entryway to equity building. Right now, we're building quasi affordable housing that people come in, they rent, and then when they want to take their next step, they leave District Four. I was in ECC a couple of months ago and I asked a developer that wanted to build on 400 South, why don't you build three bedroom? And he said, oh, you gotta go to, people just want to go to West Jordan for that. That, that to me is, that just rings disingenuous to me. And I think the city has a part to assure, whether it's through carrots, whether it's through sticks, to make sure that we are creating affordable entry level opportunities for purchase in District Four. We can do it. There's an article today in the Salt Lake Tribune about the struggles we have on 400 South and TSA zoning. A favorite subject of mine, if you've ever talked to me about the internet, about planning and zoning in the city. That's an opportunity where we can create for purchase condominium housing where people can start their adulthood, invest in the city, build equity and be long-term residents of District Four. Thank you.
So you're saying, as opposed to rentals, we're talking perhaps condos?
I don't, I don't dislike rentals, Randall, though they have a place. But we don't, we are not flat out building for purchase opportunities in District Four. It's just not happening.
And how would you accomplish that? Because if, if the building you talked to said, people who want three bedrooms are going to South Jordan, how would you change that?
Well, the data, the data doesn't bear that out, by the way. Rental rates are, our, our rates are low on three bedroom here in downtown. There's a demand for it. What I, what I think it's, it's, you know, it's just not as profitable. But so can we use carrots? Can we use sticks? What tools can we pull to create those opportunities? They exist, there's got to be a way where there's a political will, there's always a way.
Okay. Would you describe a time you worked with a resident for something important for their neighborhood?
That's a great question for me because that's my whole career. Man, I can think of a million stories. One would be, Mayor Men, one of your projects when you started, I believe, was when you were a council person, the McClellan Trail. If you remember what the McClellan Trail was like before, it was a wonderful urban connector bike lane. I was a employee of the city in civic engagement. I don't think I talked about my job very much, but I was in, I was in civic engagements, like getting people involved in city decisions. We went next door down the McClellan Trail, telling folks that lived right on the McClellan Trail that we're going to build an urban connected bike lane and make your neighborhood a better place. And people thought, some people thought I had like horns growing out of my head. They didn't know what that was. But we got it done, it was awesome. And if you've ever been down the McClellan Trail, it's a, it's a great community asset.
I'm going to ask you the one added like answers as well. The false elections are right choice.
We're going there already? We're going there already? All right, keep going.
So you're going to vote for yourself, number one.
Sure.
Who among the two people sitting there would you vote for number two?
I am so glad there's so many people here tonight exploring our candidates. I don't envy you for your second choice. It's, it's going to be difficult. I don't answer the question about mayor, I don't answer the question about our race, who, who, who you're going to vote for a second.
I think that's.
Thank you. I think people should do their due diligence. People that are here tonight are doing that and they should make the best choice based on experience, approach, which makes what their priorities are as people, as residents of the city. Sorry, that was a dodge, I know. Guys giving me thumbs down, heckling me, come on.
Do you believe the city has balanced development interests and community interests through its housing policies? And if not, where do you see the deficiencies? And how can we achieve a better balance for Salt Lake City?
Will you repeat that for me just one more time, sorry?
Yeah, I, it is.
It's, it's a little similar, it's fine.
Do you believe the city has balanced development interests and community interests? Balance those two interests through its housing policies? And if not, where do you see the deficiencies? And how can we achieve a better balance for Salt Lake City? So I, I, I guess, I guess we're debating between community and business and what's good for everybody. We have a balance now.
Let me tell you another story that I like telling about, about growth and, and some of the decisions we make as a city. When I first started at City Hall in 2012, one of my jobs was to go back through all of our plans and kind of do a retrospective of where Salt Lake had gone with our priorities and growth. And in the 1970s, it was a stated goal of our RDA in the neighborhoods south of downtown to demolish residential neighborhoods and put up car dealerships. So, right, I mean, that's a stunning, that's a stunning priority today that is just like, what? But that's a decision you look back 40 years from now and say, wow, what were they, what were they thinking? You know, they were thinking financially, basically. The city was probably in a financial pension, needed that sales tax revenue. Well, right now, we are in a housing crunch, a housing crisis and we are building doors monolithically, like I said, without getting, we have growth demands here in the city and we're not getting the community benefit necessary to, to match that livability, like that story I told earlier with the park. We need to get more community benefit from our growth. We can do that.
But don't businesses seem, especially in this district, seem to have more power than the community does?
There's a reason why I chose people first as my tagline, Randall. Right? I mean, I think there's a little bit of a distance in our, you, you asked before what the role of the council is? And if I could just touch on that real quick. Yeah, the role of the council is a fiduciary body, the role of the council makes ordinance decisions. But the, your council person is the most, should be the most accessible, the most responsive and the most transparent elected official you have. And that city council person should put you first. Small businesses are important, even big businesses are important. But the voters of this district should be the number one priority. The residents of this district should be the number one priority of your elected council person.
What do you, especially as it refers to District Four, what is the city doing right that you would like to see expanded?
Well, one of the great things the city did right was Central Ninth that I worked on when I was at the RDA. There's a great article in the Salt Lake Tribune about it. It's the right scaled neighborhood. It's the city doing the right thing, which is putting an infrastructure. Unfortunately, Central Ninth was zoned out of my district in 2020 with the 2020 census. Did you ask me what was going wrong?
No, I said.
Oh, just what was going right?
Trying to be positive here.
I love it. I will tell you, I will tell you something that was, that is going right. When I moved here in the nineties and I biked around in this town, it was one of the most dangerous towns in America to ride a bike. It was one of the most inhospitable places to walk. We have come a long way in pedestrian and bikeability infrastructure in this city and I want to keep going. I want the safest streets in America, I want the nicest streets in America and I want the most green and sweetest streets in the United States.
I'll flip it around and be a newsburst and say, what's the city doing wrong in District Four?
I hit on it earlier. I think our biggest, I think right in District Four, our biggest missed opportunity is 400 South and the TSA zoning. It's, it's right, it goes right through the heart of our district and what's happening there is unaffordable. What's happening there is uninteresting and it's a livability, livability killer. And I'm disappointed that we haven't revisited TSA zoning and what's happening on 400 South and made it better over the last six years. And if I'm lucky enough to get elected, that'll be one of the first things I push for. I want that to be an affordable transit connected corridor that is not overparked and not overbuilt and not block long developments. We can do better on 400 South.
Doesn't the state control 400 South? So what powers do we have to do what you're saying?
Well, the city controls the street, right? The city controls 400 South, the street. We have the planning and the zoning capabilities to make the, I think 400 South is only about halfway built out. We can revise and make better buildings going forward and set the example for the next generation of growth along that corridor. Now, yes, big UDOT controlled streets in our city are a challenge. We all know that, 700 East, State Street, 600 South up to State Street. I'd like to see more livability there. When I was at the RDA in 2013, we worked hard with UDOT to improve 300 West. If you remember what 300 West was like before all the marmalade infrastructure was put in. And UDOT was not like stoked when we, when we came to them with the, with the, with the concept. But it's not, it hasn't, it hasn't not been done before. We can make those streets better.
On another topic, how do you, how do you think the interconnect, the IHC hospital on the old Sears building lot do affect District Four?
I got to give props to my central city community council folks for being super engaged on this. Lake Sears is a huge, huge opportunity. Lake Sears and what happens there on that lot is a huge, huge turning point for that neighborhood. And I love the engagement we've had in that. I'd like to see IHC come in as a, as a very active livability partner and make sure that that is a community asset and not, not a livability killer there, you know? I want to see that be, I want IHC to engage in the neighborhood in a very authentic way and come with some, and we can get some neighborhood priorities done with, with the IHC project. It's all about communication, it's all about collaboration and engagement.
Do you see changing the nature of the whole area around, around there?
Around State Street?
Yeah.
Not enough. I would like to see State Street be a jewel of the state. I would like to see it be a grand boulevard, but I don't think, I don't think we're there. I don't think we're heading that way. That could be a catalytic project to get us there.
What, what is the most, if you had to pick an issue with District Four, what do you think is the most pressing issue to deal with right now from a city council point of view?
Well, everything trickles down from growth, in my opinion, right? All of our stressors that we, that we see, whether it's the unaffordability of our neighborhood to the, you know, to the levability stuff I've talked about. The, the growth of our neighborhood is pushing eastward and how we react to that as an elect, as an elected body and as a municipality will shape the trajectory of this, of this district for generations. We need to make sure that we're leaving a more livable city for my son and the kids of the, of the people in this room and for us today.
Did you say that growth is moving eastward?
I would say, I would say that, that growth is definitely pushing eastward in District Four, there's no doubt about it. Yeah. I mean, along the Fourth South and in some of our neighborhoods, you look at great, you look at Western Gardens, you look at a lot of other things around Trolley Square, there's a lot of, there's a lot of growth in the pipeline coming eastward in, in District Four for sure. It's not all bad. I'm not like anti-growth guy, don't get me wrong.
Is that a lot of room to grow east, eastward?
Well, we look at the west side of downtown, there is a lot of room to grow and that could be one of the best places in, in the entire city if we would get our stuff together.
How do you feel about crime in District Four in any way that controlling crime or cracking down on it could be acknowledged? Or is there not a crime issue that concerns you?
Well, crime is a catchall phrase that can mean anything to anybody. I would say, I mean, I was a victim of burglary during the pandemic. My house was broken into and I lost three bikes and my son's video game system. It's not great. Everybody in this city deserves to feel safe. The city is only great, as great as we feel safe within it. But that being said, like crime to me, once a crime is committed, there's a systemic failure already happening. We've, people don't commit crimes for the thrill of it. They commit crimes because they're missing something from Maslow's hierarchy of needs, whether it's housing, you know, there's mental health issues or there's, you know, a drug issue usually when it comes to crime. So the failure happens before the crime is committed. So I want to do more as a city to connect people to services.
So you don't have an issue with, with the way police are handling crime? Do you have an issue?
I have an issue with the way we expect police to do everything.
Elaborate?
Well, we send them to, we send them to, we send them to every call. I think that we can come up, and we talk about police response times. I think we can be more creative about how we, how calls are responded to with non-police response.
Well, so how would you handle losing your video games and your three bikes?
How did I handle it? I felt tired.
How should it be handled with the police? Not how you handled it with your kids, because I'm sure they were not happy.
No, he was not happy and we still talks about it.
Did they have your games back?
I mean, I, I have no problem with the police response to that. You know, I filed a police report, but there was, there was no, you know, there was no investigation to be had. It was a, it was a simple burglary crime. I don't, yeah, I didn't, I don't, I wouldn't change anything about police response to that. I mean, I believe that we need more community level, community policing. I see a lot of, some of the stuff that's been accomplished around Toffler Park and the community councils and their work. I think it's all about community, community connection. I've been heartened to see some of that in District Four as I've done this, as I've embarked on this journey. So, yeah, I, I wouldn't, as far as my case, nothing.
And you talked about the root causes and obviously that's something that I care about because I work at Odyssey House. And I don't know how significant or will the council plays in dealing with root causes like substance use and things like that. How, how could we be better?
Well, some of these problems are systemic, right? My father was a crisis intervention psychologist at the public hospital in, in Las Vegas growing up and his position was eliminated when we kind of kicked the chair out of mental health care in this country in the eighties. We just need, we've, we do good work here in Salt Lake City, connecting people to mental health services. We can do better, we can invest more, it's just we got to stay vigilant. They're saying I have one minute left. Can I give a close? I got 20 seconds.
Okay, yeah, I didn't start my stopwatch. Any closing thoughts?
Yeah, I would just say, this has been, this, this whole journey has been amazing and life-changing and totally killer. Everyone should run for office. Seriously. And I just want you to remember today that my approach, my experience and my roots in this community make me a unique candidate for District Four. And I hope you consider voting for me November 21st. People first, thanks.
Thank you, Clayton Squidner. And our final candidate, Ava Lopez Chavez.
Thank you, Randall. Thank you.
Now, I will start my stopwatch.
Can you all hear me okay in the back? Too quiet? I'm teasing.
I'll ask you the question I asked, Kim, what is the most pressing issue for District Four? In your opinion?
Thank you and thank you to the organizers, thank you Esther, thank you to all the community councils that are here tonight. I see lots of friends and neighbors. I'm Ava Lopez Chavez. I'm joined with my family over here in the corner and I'm really proud to be the first born in my family, the first to go to college, the first to be born in Salt Lake City, actually, and the first to pave the way for my family. A little bit of our background, my family migrated over from Mexico seeking opportunities. And it's Salt Lake City and it's in particular, this district, my first apartment at the Landing and my first home on Douglas Street. And it was these opportunities in District Four that paved the way so that I could be a community organizer, be a project manager and be a city employee that represented you, my neighbors. So thank you for participating. It is no easy feat to show up for your community. It's no easy feat to have your voice heard. So I hope today you get to learn a lot from all of us. I think the most pressing issue in District Four is the displacement that we see, not just of residents. I talked last night with Kathy, she's in the crowd. Kathy, if you're there, I can't see you, but wave if you're there. And she shared with me that her home is constantly getting offers from developers. But luckily, this parcel, which is so unique to our neighborhood, is going to be passed on to another generation of Scots where we'll raise families. But that, that's displacement happening through zoning and through different policy that we've created that says it ushers in development. It also displaces the small businesses. We forget that we have a university business district and we forget that because we've suffered so many losses. Cranky's Bike Shop, one of my favorite places to go to for over a decade to just get my bike changed or some brakes checked up on. It's gone and they're suffering also, they're still in District Four, but that same small business is still suffering today. I think there's levers and tools that we can do through displacement strategy, anti-displacement strategies. We have studies and data that show this, but a thriving city is one that helps keep residents and build that community. We need to institutionalize this in our city.
Specifically, how would you, let's say the woman that you were talking to, I don't know how much she was offered for parcels, but I'm sure it was astronomically. I don't know how much she was offered for parcels, but I'm sure it was astronomically more than it was probably worth and certainly more than what she paid to live there. How would you persuade somebody who has a, say, a $300,000 property to turn down $600,000 from the governor?
That's a great question. We're all empowered as property owners. You get to determine your legacy of your city. And this is part of it. There's an education process and knowing what's the legacy we want, something that's important to me. We see exceptions being approved by our planning commission repeatedly. It's almost streamlined. This is not outlandish, but I would propose a six-month moratorium to help bring back zoning and be transparent about the exceptions that we're allowing. This doesn't stop precedent with planning or any of the propositions of the developments in our neighborhood. But I can assure you today, we have 8.3 acres really close by at Judge Memorial that's going to be developed, possibly sold, right? There's more parcels around our neighborhood that are getting developed. I think it's critical and important that we determine as a neighborhood, how our neighbor is going to grow, how East Central is going to grow or Central City. This is a concern of mine. I consider myself a permanent renter, someone that has lived in the neighborhood for a decade, but is trying to buy into the housing market. I know, as I've talked to many of you, this is also the same story for people that are your children or your grandchildren, young professionals that are trying to find permanent residency in our city. We need the support of our city council. This is how I'm determined to keep showing up for you. This is the story that needs to be told.
And what can the city council do to prevent somebody, somebody taking a parcel of land who has a lot more money than the person who owns the parcel of land?
Yeah, these are private sales. Again, I don't want to mislead anyone. You can have a private sale in exchange, but the way we zone does determine the direction of growth and it's going eastward. And by the way, if you haven't forgotten, the University of Utah is going to usher in 40,000 new students, putting pressure on our neighborhood once more. I can tell you, so many of us stay up late at night because there is an exorbitant amount of students happening. And students coming in and different practices. These are quality of life issues happening in our neighborhood. And as a city, we've tackled this issue without the help or without the relationship at the University of Utah. So I'm proud that I wasn't just a student or somebody that has the relationship up with President Randall. Uh, but to make sure that we are communicating with the U because I don't think it's fair that our neighbors and our taxpayers are taking on the responsibility in the brunt of this growth. And I think there's a great area down at Station Central. This is located between Fifth South area, Second West. Actually, it's where our temporary sanction camp is going. We have lots of RDA property available down there to grow. I'd love to see our University of Utah look at different parcels down at, at the western part of our district to grow. It makes sense. This is the vibrancy of our community. It's where opportunities are and it's where transitory stations are. So that means we have pedestrian access, access for these students that want opportunities just like I wanted.
Since you brought up the University of Utah, some people in this district have a lot of complaints about wild parties and things like that going on with university kids. How would you control that with the noise ordinance, with the police crackdown, what?
Oh, this is a great question. I have lots of experience with our noise ordinance, with policing. This is part of the duties and jobs and role I had is taking your concerns to the city and making sure that the right departments were responding. And this is really important to us, how we react. The noise ordinance is something that's measured and controlled and cited by our county health department. But the way we measure and partner as a police department is where our city is able to control and amplify that. Our police department has asked for different tools to help measure noise. That's something that I think we should approach. It's important. It's getting out of hand and it's not just mufflers. We're talking about noise at 2:00 AM, 3:00 AM, Randall. I, I myself will go out, sit on my porch and watch a whole parade of people go through in the night. And as a working person, that's not very fair to me. So I think it's important that we give the proper tools. This is the right type of enforcement. This is what keeps our neighborhood safe. And we mentioned early, how do we keep District 4 safe for families? We need to balance this. We need a structured safety in a way because everybody deserves to feel safe in their home. This is something that matters to me deeply in District 4.
How would you change things to make people feel more safe in their homes in this area?
Yeah. There's lots of different groups, but I, I want to shout out to the East Central Community Council group that's overseeing parties. Um, and it's not just parties. It really comes down to the quality of life issues with my neighbors. You know who you are in the crowd. You're outgoing and doing the duties that our city should be providing for you. Unfortunately, we do have, we've seen great growth of calls of service over the time of the pandemic and since I've joined the city. But it's important that we leverage this. We know that we need to invest more and better tools to help our residents combat this in a way that's safe, that builds community. Um, so that's all to say, it's not just about community policing, but it's also making sure that during a game, we have the proper civil enforcement tools out there to help basically leverage and be malleable and negotiate these different happenings. We want people to have fun and access our stadium, but there's a lot of pressure on our neighborhood. And I think it's worthwhile as those residents that live there, we're the ones that face it daily.
Another question that was submitted is missing middle housing, middle housing, middle income housing has become a bit of a buzzword. Should we incentivize missing middle housing? And if so, how can we do that?
Well, I want to start out by saying we're missing all types of housing. It's about building more supply. That's the real issue. We are a generation or more behind in building housing of all types. And that's not just your starter home to build equity in. In a dense city like ours, we know that the legislature controls our ability to build, uh, what we would consider condos or the ability to build more dense, dense, uh, units that could be bought in the future. In East Central and in Central City, we see lots of applications of developers trying to come in, build in what we consider gentle density, townhomes, different options of duplexes. One of my best friends, his family has a home that's 120 years old. And it's so fascinating because that original home is on Second and Second, a place that's surrounded by giant skyscraper, another giant skyscraper across the street, another giant skyscraper, all rental units. And this home, it houses one family, now the fourth generation of Fries. And in the back is eight apartments. And they've been able to house different people of socioeconomic statuses, different age groups that have come through. And this would be illegal today to build in Salt Lake City. So again, we need to, I, I think it is crucial and important for the growth of our city that we build this out and we quantify it in a way. And we understand that this is opportunity to not just improving our neighborhood, but to building in permanent residency. We want our families to stay here. We want to give them a permanent option. It's not always going to look like an apartment. We want to give them the option to buy.
I'll ask you the same question I ask everyone. Rank choice voting. You're going to vote for yourself first. Who would you put in second place?
I'll say this. The person that I'm ranking in second place is going to be someone that has shown up for this community. Someone that is unshakable, someone that understands that the duty is beyond budgeting. It's beyond auditing. It's going to be somebody that understands it is transparency, it is education and it is bringing our community along with us. This is something that has lacked for over a decade that I've been here. I've seen many leaders step by. This is what has helped me and persuaded me to jump into this race. I think it is essential that our neighbors are represented. We have to be unshakable. And that's the candidate that'll be my number second, my number two choice.
And it has to be, out of the two people sitting there, would you want them?
Somewhere in my mind is trapped, you know, the answer is trapped. Apologies, Randall. Yeah.
Where is it tapping off?
Man, you're, you're a tough, you're a tough cookie, you know that?
I think it's a good question because ranked choice voting is sort of interesting.
It's democratic. I love ranked choice voting.
But, okay. I'll, I'll just consider that a, yeah.
You are a sweetheart. Thank you.
Somebody in second place.
Yeah.
Uh, this is a long one and, and it was submitted by one of our residents. Uh, so follow me if you, if you will. The state and others have ignored the previous agreements, the conditional use permits that were made with Salt Lake City about our homeless resource centers with regard to the number of beds that would be allowed in specific locations. Do you have a plan for how to hold firm to promises like these made to neighborhoods that host homeless resources now and in the future? Do you have a plan for how the impacts of homelessness will be more effectively managed throughout Salt Lake City?
Yeah.
I thought it was a long one.
No, that is a long one, but this is an important question to ask. So thank you for whoever wrote that in. I want to start out by saying this, and this is not to have, not to lack compassion. We all do. We know as neighbors, we pick ourselves up. We saw some of the most tumultuous times in our city's history in the last few years. Um, I'm glad to have been a part of the team that could help our neighbors overcome some of these turmoils. But that's to say, our, our neighborhoods are also not set up to be places of sanction camp. Um, so I'm glad that we're experimenting with different solutions, but I also want to recognize that we have in District 4 in particular, the last time I read the stat was over 80% of our HRCs or different type of permanent supportive housing, which we know works and is helpful to help remediate people that are in need. But a lot of these areas, and in particular, what comes to mind is right across the club, there is the Magnolia, which is a permanent, uh, permanent supportive housing unit. And unfortunately, they didn't have the budget to properly secure and to help their clientele. So with much heart and greatness, I say that we need to audit these places and work with our officers and work to place, um, if not an officer, to secure these areas so that our neighbors that share these spaces and have to be, and, and experience symptoms unlike anything else I've seen. Uh, and that's putting it lightly. There's a lot that has to be managed when we allow these neighbors to come in. And it's also recognizing that these clientele, these individuals need the best support they can. So I think, again, it's important that we go through and we look at calls of service. They've gone up, the Geraldine on 700 South has the most calls of service in the city. Um, it's something I've continually worked on and I'm looking forward to continue to work on this issue.
And I guess the, the concern of that question was that, um, HRC seem to be just in one area of the city.
Sure.
And, and then in another area, it's one of the people in our downtown community council deals with the gate rages across the street.
Yeah.
And, and so you're, and, and the problem, I, I don't know, the issue there is that all the homeless services, including Fourth Street, uh, the weekend center, the, the soup kitchen are all right there and they're not moving. So how do you, how do you balance something like that of business interests?
Yeah.
And then with, with residential interests?
And I want to say, I'm excited because other cities have stepped up like never before. I'm friends with the mayor of Midville, Mayor Marcus Stevenson, and they're stepping up. And this is part of the conversation. So this is a legislative issue, but I don't want to defer and say it's our voice as city leaders that we get to determine how this conversation points. So I'm excited to lead on this issue in the future.
So what role does the city council? It seemed like the city council had a pretty significant role when we were talking about where we were going to locate the homeless resource centers.
Mm-hmm.
So the city does have a role in that. And how would you control, or how, how would you advocate for dealing with issues like that in the future?
And if I'm not mistaken, Randall, in 2018, after we had our Operation Real Brand, the city was forced into a position where it had to look for different options. And that was a different, uh, type of leadership at that time. So where do we go from now? And again, knowing we have HRCs that are pretty permanent right now, I want to make it very clear that I'm not interested in growing the HRCs and our network of it, but rather to make sure that we have proper articulation and transparency to our neighbors that don't know how to handle this issue and are asking themselves, what are the tools the city is going to provide for the symptoms that happen every day? Crime, bio-waste. I don't have to go into detail because we experience it every day. And I can tell you, myself, my neighbor sitting right there, we have had multiple break-ins recently. Um, and it's a shame, these are people that are in need. But again, our neighborhoods are not set up to be systems or to be encampments. So I want to be very clear about that. We do need to enforce on this issue.
I, I asked blatantly this as well. What is being done right in District 4? And then the converse is, what's being done?
I love this. And I, I brought this all to you, but the general obligation bond is such a great step forward. And I'd love to see continual investment in our urban spaces. I'd love to see our median spaces studied. I'd love to see some of our pocket parks studied to connect them better. The beauty of my neighborhood is its walkability and its urban canopy and the little micro gardens. So a tool that we can do to preserve long-term is using conservation easements. Wasatch Community Gardens has used this to make sure and ensure for future generations that this green space is made available for everybody. Think this is a tool we're not leveraging. So I would be someone to promote this. I really appreciate that we have good organizations that have taken it upon themselves to preserve green space in our city. We need this because our city is growing so rapidly. We need to consider what the next hundred years is going to look like in our district.
And then the converse, what's being done while you're in District 4?
Oh gosh. I think this is interesting. This is an interesting question for me and it goes back to displacement. I think the most grotesque thing that I can think of is knowing that I have neighbors today that are being pushed out. Families, I spoke to a resident, I went to the Wasatch Elementary PTA meeting and I met Anne Marie and her daughter Sylvia. And Anne Marie shared with me that her husband and her had had a serious conversation about moving out of the district. And she was appalled. And as I've attended school board meetings, I'm appalled that our superintendent has quoted saying, well, perhaps if, if certain leaders had been more proactive, perhaps if they had been more receptive, we could have prevented school closures. We've known that Benyon Elementary was being studied for closure. We've known that. And thank goodness we had good neighbors that rallied behind this. But to hear consistently over and over that we may not, that we may lose Wasatch Elementary, well, we'll be left without any elementary schools. And this is completely unacceptable to me. I'm the oldest daughter in my family, my little sister right there. She's right there, Galilea. And I point her out because this is so important to me is that our kids, our future, they know what's right and they deserve a chance at these opportunities. So as long as I'm empowered, I will protect Wasatch Elementary. That, that is so important to me.
That's important to Odyssey House as well because our people that are moms with their kids who are in our program, take their kids to Wasatch. It's really significant. Quick question, you got 20 seconds. Why should we vote for you?
Vote for me because I have the energy, I have the expertise. You know me, I'm your neighbor from Douglas Street. But most importantly, it's making sure that you have someone that shows up. I have continued to show up for this community the last decade. I will continue to show up for you. Thank you so much. Rank me Ava Lopez Chavez as your number one choice for candidate for District 4. Thank you.
Let's have a round of applause for all the city council candidates. Very well, thank you. Now we have the mayoral candidates. Have you guys gone through the order? No, we're going to now. You want to take a break? No. Who's, who do first? Michael? Michael then Aaron and then Rocky? Okay, we have a different set of questions for the mayoral candidates. Michael Valentine is going to come up first. Lucky you, you got number one.
Yeah, that's great. It's perfect because I'm going to be ranked number one, so.
He's still not going to say who's, who's second in your ranked choice voting?
Uh, I absolutely will answer. Do you want me to answer right now?
You refuse to answer, you mean?
No, I, I'll answer. We were surprised that.
It's interesting. Who can you start? Who can you start? Here's a candidate who's going to talk about ranked choice voting and he voted for himself first, I presume. And who, who sandwiched you with second?
Yeah, so, um, I love ranked choice voting. Um, two years ago, when it was the first ranked choice voting election in Salt Lake City history, um, my friends ran against Chris Warren in District 3. And, you know, we kind of call it the Abbott and Costello routine where they kind of sandwiched him. And it was a rank me first, like him second, no, me first, him second. So I feel like we kind of pioneered this technique. So I'm, I love ranked choice voting. Glad to see it happen. Um, I think the choice is very clear for me. Um, I'm the only candidate, I believe, running in Utah that's personally been homeless. Um, it's the number one issue to me. Um, I'm world famous for, for fighting this current mayor and this current administration to save a Pantages Theater downtown. Um, I tried for a long, long time to meet with her. I tried to work with her. I tried to give her this deal on a silver platter. She refused. So I absolutely will be ranking Rocky second. And I urge every one of my supporters to. So I absolutely will be ranking Rocky second, and I urge every one of my supporters to rank Rocky second. Because no matter what, if either one of us wins, we're going to be, you know, I'm not going anywhere if I don't win. I'll be up there fighting for homelessness. I'll be, you know, pushing Rocky to adopt my entire platform and do what we can to build a better future, so easy choice.
Thank you for answering that.
Yeah.
Yeah, that'd be the first one to name the name. What would you do to make our streets safer and more walkable and bikeable?
Yeah, it's a great question. So this kind of goes back to, you know, what the city's supposed to be doing with the RDA and having a redevelopment agency that actually works for the public, works for the city, is building properties, investing in development that is there for the community and not for real estate corporations, developers, and all these things. So it really starts there with what these things are going. I'm a huge supporter of public transportation. We need to, you know, kill this I-15 deal. We need to invest in public transportation. We need to have, you know, expand tracks. I support, you know, expanding Amtrak across the country and, you know, across the Utah to Logan, to Moab, you know, to St. George. We need protected bike lanes so people aren't getting hit by cars and biking. You know, we're in District Four, we're the heart of the city downtown. I think we all know, you know, we can't keep building out. We got to be building up, right? Especially, you know, downtown where I live. My store down there is right at the gateway. I live right across the street there. I'm always downtown. So it's important that we start building actual walkable cities. We start, you know, having, looking at master plans for the entire city and, you know, especially District Four, where people can get all their needs met, you know, just by walking around, going to the stores, going to, you know, get groceries, doing all these things, looking at food deserts, places where food's not accessible, having childcare, having schools close by. All these things are important, and it starts with master planning with the city and then, you know, having a city government that actually cares about the communities, working for the public.
I've been told that ask people to be specific. When you talk about concepts, if we're talking about childcare, a wasteland of grocery, places to shop where you can buy groceries at a reasonable rate, those kinds of things. How would you accomplish something, you said, change the master plan, but you can't just change the master plan and do nothing? But how would you specifically improve those areas?
Well, it goes back to, you know, the RDA exactly, so like, you know, I talk about this a lot, the theater, wearing my Pantages shirt up here. The, it wasn't, that story isn't just about destroying historic theaters. It's about giving twenty million dollars to Texas developers to build luxury housing that are, you know, studio apartments mostly like fifteen hundred dollars a month. You know, that's twenty million dollars that was sucked out of public coffers, that was sucked out of the community that should have gone to housing, to, you know, public investments. So I really ask the question, why is our city giving twenty million dollars to a company that manages a hundred and sixty billion dollars in the world, you know, one of the biggest companies in the world, and not investing it in local businesses, investing in local community neighborhoods, looking at, you know, small-town grocers, things like this that are available, that are just, you know, not getting the public investments because they're being stepped over for developers and things like this. So I really, you know, take it all the way back to the very square root of like, who is our city working for? Where is our public money going? Is it going to pockets of millionaires and billionaires, or is it going to small businesses, to locals, investing in the things that we need as community members?
Would you describe a time you worked with a resident to implement something important for their neighborhood?
Yeah, so my question or my answer to that is a bit different than probably most. So I have a store down on the gateway. It's down in the heart of, you know, Rio Grande, right where the Road Home was closed. I have homeless people coming to my store every single day. I had a guy come in yesterday who, you know, just was thirsty and needed some cider. I gave him a pair of socks. And I was horrified to see that he was wearing sandals in the cold rain yesterday. And we talked about, you know, finding him some shoes and things like this, so. It's not just about, you know, working to help, you know, businesses and people that are in housing. It's very important to me that we start at the very bottom and our most vulnerable people and, you know, working to help them get the things they need to get into services and get off the street and get real support, you know? I mentioned, I believe I'm the only candidate running for any office in Utah that has been homeless before, but it's a stigma that people get stuck with, you know? They see people as trash and less than human, and it's very concerning to me because, you know, a lot of people could have looked at me the same way. Now I'm up here on the stage debating the current mayor and the former mayor. So everyone deserves a second chance. We all have to put, you know, our hearts and our compassion on the line and, you know, be there for people that really need our help.
This is from one of the residents, I presume, in the downtown area. And it's a quote from her, "I often don't feel safe walking around downtown because most people out are homeless, and I'm a small female. Is there a way to concentrate and help these people? We all want to come out and enjoy nature."
Yeah. So that's a great, great comment. I think there's a huge stigma on homelessness. You know, a lot of people don't understand it, and sadly, you know, the news and the narratives that get told about homelessness aren't always accurate. You know, a lot of the time, homeless people are not criminals. They get portrayed as being criminals when they're not. They're actually victims of crime more often than not. And they're preyed upon by gangs, by drug dealers, by all these, you know, horrible people that are trying to take advantage of them. So I have a huge problem whenever, you know, crime and homelessness is brought up, and then homeless people are, you know, said to be the criminals because they're always, you know, most often the victim. So I think, you know, the most important thing is, something needs to happen here. And then again, you know, having the police go out and do these homeless abeyments over and over and over is not helping us say that these, you know, criminalizing homelessness and having city policies that criminalize homelessness is not helping us to like, you know, to change that stigma that these people are victims and they're not criminals. In February of this year, I released a housing homeless plan. I was the first one to release a plan on homelessness. My plan's very simple, declare a state of emergency, set up sanction camping for everybody, not for only fifty people. Intake everybody and get them into long-term housing. I've done a lot of research across the country and around the world of what's been successful in terms of homelessness. Houston, the last ten years, was able to house twenty-five thousand people directly into housing, just basically bypass the shelter model and, you know, look at long-term solutions. I was very pleased to see, in July this year, Mike Johnston, the mayor of Denver, just got sworn in. And the very first thing, the very first thing he did in office was declare a state of emergency, and he vowed to house a thousand people by the end of the year, and they are doing it right now. It's literally next door in Denver. About a week or two ago, they had a move-in day where they closed a homeless camp to literally put people into housing. So I think, you know, looking at this optimistically and with, you know, through compassion and empathy and helping our most vulnerable people, I think Salt Lake can be one of the first major cities in America, and we can beat Denver to house everybody off the streets and get them into long-term housing and make housing a human right, to ban these barbaric homeless abeyments that are happening right now that are just cruel and just really despicable, in my opinion, of going around and attacking the homeless people for just literally existing in public spaces. There's a lot of court cases around, district cases that are happening right now, and it's being shown that these camping laws are illegal, that people have a public right, a constitutional human right to exist in public spaces, that they have a right to be in parks if they have nowhere else to go. And we've seen this historically, you know? You look at Hoovervilles and things during the Depression, there's pictures of Central Park where there's shanty towns, people lived for years in these park areas. So it's so important that our most vulnerable people, their rights aren't being violated, that, you know...
Well, what would you say to this woman, and she's just expressing a concern that she wanted mayoral candidates to answer, not, not are we being compassionate to unchildren people?
Yeah.
But what about my fear?
Sure.
Because I'm a small statured woman, and I feel intimidated.
Yeah.
What would you say to her?
I think, you know, the sanction camping is such an important point because it gets people off the streets, out of, you know, just out of public areas, and it centralizes support, it centralizes resources, and it cleans up our city instantly. You know, I'm a business owner, and I've also been homeless, so I kind of have a unique position here. I'm always baffled to see other businesses come out very aggressively and, you know, blame the homeless and not the city and the ordinances and the policies. Because every business owner in town should be very excited about sanction camping. It will instantly clean up our entire city. And when I talk about sanction camping too, it doesn't, you know, I hate this term camping, you know, I say this in every event. These people aren't camping, they're surviving out here. Camping's a recreational activity. So like, my version of sanction camping is going and taking over the RDA buildings that are vacant, that are sitting there. There's buildings all over the city. The RDA has, you know, power to go buy more buildings and, you know, create these areas that are inside, that are off, you know, not just like camping outside or in a pod or something like that. So I would suggest, you know, that we take action right now and house these people, get them off the streets, and clean up our city all at the same time. So win-win-win.
Your version of sanction camping includes putting people inside buildings?
Yeah.
That's not really camping, is it?
Well, that's why this term is not a good term, you know? This time sanction camping, you know? I've always had a problem with this thing where people are saying camping because again, it's like, these people are surviving. They have nowhere else to go, you know?
What RDA buildings would you open up specifically to allow unchildren people to stay inside?
Yeah, I think that's a good question. There's one on Eight South over by Fisher that I, you know, is vacant, it's just sitting there. There's some other ones around town. I think it just depends on what our needs for those buildings are, you know? Because the important thing about sanction camping is the intake process. You know, not everybody has the same situation with homelessness. Some people, you know, need longer drug treatment. Some people just need, you know, room to get, you know, their foot in the door to a job. Some people are disabled, they're never going to work again. So it's important that we're looking at these all individualistic, and we're putting people into services that they need where they can get the best support. You know, I have a different answer on the shelters than my opponents here. I'd actually like to see them turn into long-term housing. And, you know, like I said, other cities around the country and around the world are seeing great success in just, you know, bypassing the shelter model that has rampant abuse, where people get their stuff thrown away, where people don't even like to go, or they get segregated, and see longer-term solutions.
We, we can talk about homelessness all night, and District Four is concerned about other things as well. One question submitted was that District Four is an integral part of the U of U student housing. Could the relationship between District Four representation and university's administration be improved?
Yeah, absolutely. I think that's a...
And how?
Yeah. So again, another unique answer. So I'm actually a student at the U right now. I'm studying film and media arts. You know, I'm a filmmaker and director. My idea was to... I'm pursuing a master's degree there. I'd like to, you know, teach film one day because I love talking about it. So I think it's important to, you know, find that balance, you know? Noise ordinance is something that, you know, everyone deals with downtown. I've, you know, called on apartments next to me, loud, it's not being enforced. But it's important we find that balance, you know? It's important that we don't deprive, you know, my fellow students up there the chance to go to these parties and interact and make friendships that will last forever and have the real college experience. You know, I'm sure that might not be the most popular answer with the houses and the communities, but it's important we do find that balance, and we're not infringing on the students' rights to, you know, have a fun time and unwind from school as well. You know, another answer is, there's a lot of these apartment buildings going up that, you know, they're just trying to cut costs and save money. Like, these walls aren't, you know, very soundproof at all. They're paper thin. So I think it's important to make sure, like, any new buildings that are being built, any new apartments, they are have, you know, better standards for sound quality and soundproofing. But, you know, I am very concerned with folks that have, with kids, and they're just trying to sleep at night and just, you know, live their lives too. So it's important we do find that balance and make sure that, you know, student activities are, you know, central more to school areas and, I don't know, just keep that conversation and the empathy on both sides going.
It's a tough balance to reach because, I mean, I think back to my college days, and there were wild parties in the first eight and sixties, you know, and...
I was thinking about Animal House.
There was a, there was sort of an area where you could party when, that was a campus area. And this becomes a very unique situation because student housing comes all the way into our district, right?
Yeah. Well, it's funny, I just had a quick story about that. So I grew up in Logan, went to college at Utah State. There's a very famous event there that, you know, people of a certain generation will know, the Hal, the Halloween party, where people would come from miles and states away to come in the eighties and nineties, and it was like the craziest party in Utah, up at Utah State.
I'm sure Logan loved that, right?
But it got so wild, they actually, you know, they had to stop it, and, you know, it's a lot different today. But, you know, it's interesting when, you know, these things happen, you know, generations, kind of a rite of passage of like going to college and having these experiences. I think it's important, but it's also to not, you know, go off the rails and go too crazy, so.
Another topic, what can the city do to reduce water usage?
Yes, this is great.
From a mayoral point of view?
Yeah, yeah, so I think the, there's a lot of stuff that needs to be going on. I will start with the top and kind of work my way down. So the number one issue, you know, with the Great Salt Lake is agriculture. With, you know, I think it's like sixty-five, seventy percent of the water being taken out is going to these agricultural farms, the alfalfa farms. And what's crazy is like a lot of the water gets wasted before it even gets to the farms. The piping is just, you know, old, the infrastructure's not good. There's just so much water just wasted, just, you know, seeping into the dirt. Obviously, that's a state issue. The Great Salt Lake affects all of us in Utah. I think the mayor needs to be a champion of that, and you go into these meetings with the governor, with the legislature, with the county, with the feds at the EPA level, and, you know, create that coalition and just push for things to happen. I support the Sierra Utah lawsuit recently filed against the state of Utah for their inaction on the Great Salt Lake. From there, I think there's a lot of cool stuff to be done at the city level. Actually, you know, I really like what Mayor Menahal was saying about the water audit. I think that's a great idea. There's so many ways we can save water all across the city. I would like to see more incentives for zero scapeing, for people changing their yards to native plants, and I think they look better and they save water. It's, you know, wild to have grass grown in a desert, so. And then, you know, I also own a business, so we're always thinking about how can we improve our water usage. You know, I'm working to build like a factory, and we're looking at water recycling equipment that they have nowadays. It's really awesome, where water's being reused and it's very efficient. So there's so many things like across the whole spectrum that I just kind of listed at the smallest level and then the biggest level too. The last point about that too, I think is important, is to actually like hold businesses accountable. There's a lot of, you know, I see like Seven Eleven and like grass being watered in the middle of the day and all kinds of waters being wasted, so I think that's a shame.
Why should we vote for Michael Valentine?
Well, I think we should vote for Michael Valentine because I, I never had any interest in being the mayor. I was actually asked to do this, so I'm doing it from a place of public service. I'm not doing it for a career. I've already vowed to donate my entire salary. There was an article about this in the Tribune. I think that's almost like eight hundred thousand dollars in four years, which is crazy. So I'm really running to give back to the community. You know, I put my entire life on the line to save, fight to save the Pantages Theater, which is in District Four, which is one of the greatest crimes that have happened in District Four, having that theater torn down, that was supposed to be passed on to our children, our grandchildren. It was supposed to be a historic theater district for the entire state to come celebrate downtown with us. I think it's important to, you know...
Remind him, Michael.
Okay. That's fine.
Michael Valentine.
Thanks so much.
Hi there.
Hi.
Good evening.
Current mayor is second. Welcome, Mary.
Thanks, I'm happy to be here. Thanks for sticking around. Thank you for shutting off the air conditioning, whoever did that. Just extended our ability to be here longer, so glad to be here. Thanks, Randall.
What is the most pressing issue facing District Four right now from a mayoral standpoint?
District Four is pretty awesome because, as you know, it reaches up to the U and then it encompasses almost all of our downtown. Definitely all of our technically defined central business district. And the most growth in the city is happening downtown right now. The doubling of the downtown population, whereby January or so of 2025, we will have doubled that population to ten thousand people living downtown. And growth, I think, generally... And growth, I think generally speaking, is one of the greatest challenges. And you feel it as well from the University of Utah. There's a lot of subjects we have talked about tonight and more we could talk about. Um, and then there's the challenges of growth that are difficult and that are playing out across this country in capital cities and medium-sized cities, including homelessness, including the affordability crisis. Um, but I tell you, I would take the challenges of growth any day over the alternative of decline. And when I have the privilege of talking to other mayors around the country whose cities have declining populations, who have companies leaving and declining numbers of their economy, um, those are not challenges that I think we want to face. It's better if we can get our hands into the growth that's happening and shape it in the way that benefits us best. And that's the job of the city.
Is growth leaving some people behind though?
Absolutely, it does. And we've seen, thanks to, you know, a lot of the research, KEMC Gardner Policy Institute has been doing, James Wood for a very long time, looking at housing challenges.
Eight oh eight PM.
My watch is talking. Um, but for our, almost twenty years, we've been adding fewer houses than the demand of our population needed. Um, and that's been around the whole region. We know that this is affecting Salt Lakeers in particular because of the high demand of this area. And that's why when I came into office, even though with our first budget, we knew we were at the beginning of a pandemic and we dramatically cut our investments across the board, we did invest. Thank you, City Council. I see Councilmember Petro and Councilmember, I know Waldemaros is here tonight. We still invested in the city's anti-gentrification plan, which we call Thriving in Place. And it's actually, could be voted on by the City Council next Tuesday. It was about working with the community. It was the most community-invested plan the city has ever done. What are the pressures you're feeling? Um, speaking of some of the people who feel like they can't even afford their property tax, that they've been in the home for so long, they're now getting priced out even by, uh, the, just the cost of living here. So there's twenty-two strategies in the Thriving in Place Plan, you can check it out. And they came from the community, but their strategy, strategies for the city to help stabilize residents, keep you in your homes, protect your homes from, um, be, being priced out. And then if you do end up being displaced, how the, the city will help you to relocate in your community. And right now, even before we've passed the plan, we're hiring a full-time tenant advocate in City Hall to help you know what those resources are. So it's the first, yes, we're feeling the pressures of gentrification and of displacement, but these are strategies that, uh, even Mr. Anderson heard about from Crossroads Urban Center twenty years ago, did nothing, and no administration has acted on them until now. So check out Thriving in Place, but it came from the community especially.
You, you heard one of the council candidates talk about, you know, somebody coming in and saying, your home's worth four hundred thousand, but I'll pay you a million because I want to build on this. I presume that's how anti-gentrification plan would work. How would you, how does it work specifically? If I want to sell my property to a developer and, and it would screw up the whole situation in the neighborhood, how does it work?
No city is ever going to tell you you can't sell. But the zoning, the land use of your property determines how profitable that property is for a developer, someone looking to acquire it. Are you on a single-family zone or are, are you in a zone that now allows for a duplex or a fourplex? And we've seen neighborhoods, actually East Central and, and with Esther's help and a lot of you community members, where we had developers wanting to come in who had let, um, what were naturally occurring affordable housing decay. They didn't take care of it. And they did so basically to get the place to a point that they thought they could get a demolition and an upzone through. And, um, we, when I was on the City Council, we were working with this. We ended up not allowing that to pass. We did, we said no to the upzone on those properties. It reminds me also of the Ballpark neighborhood, West Temple. That entire neighborhood said, please downzone us because too many of our homes have been bought up next to each other, scraped and huge multifamily apartment, uh, development goes in in the middle of our neighborhood. So we downzoned West Temple between Thirteenth South and Seventeenth South. Still allowing for growth at the intersections. But that's the kind of listening to the neighborhood that happens, yes, at the City Council level when it comes to land use and zoning. But you see it with my administration too, on the affordable housing overlay, which came to the Planning Commission last year. We heard from about fifteen hundred people, probably many of you, different input across a wide spectrum. Neighbor saying, yes, in my backyard, neighbor saying, no, in my backyard. And I did something mayors don't usually do, listen to the city, listen to the residents, even though I'd already put it out to the Planning Commission, I pulled it out. And we put together a, a panel and, and some of you may have been on it, with different opinions from residents from different parts of the city, with housing advocates, housing academics and developers who were saying, you say you're going to create this, but you're really not. It's going to come out like that. And we asked them to come to consensus and they did. And that plan is now actually right before the City Council. And it hasn't created the uproar because the community influenced it ultimately and made it better.
This is an entirely different topic, but certainly important. Uh, it's expected that seventy percent of the buildings in Salt Lake City will fail in a seven-point-oh seismic event. What role does the city play in preparing for the inevitable?
Yeah. I mean, who doesn't still have PTSD when a big truck rumbles down your street and shakes your windows? Um, my family, is my husband and my oldest center here tonight. And our house is nineteen-ten, it shakes when a truck goes by. And we have looked into, as many of you maybe have, the city's, um, Fix the Bricks program, which is where we've, uh, received annually federal dollars for houses like ours that are unreinforced masonry. And the feds put up half of the money, um, the city brings some money to it. And then as a homeowner, we can, we have to bring the rest of the money to do seismic upgrades to our unreinforced masonry homes. Is it enough money?
Still, still in place?
Yeah, it's still in place. Check it out if you're interested. But it is not nearly enough money to fix seventy percent of the buildings in this city. Um, being honest with you, there have been hundreds of homes that have been upgraded, but the reality of these older homes, uh, is fraught.
Is it, is it scary when you hear about, I mean?
It scares all of us.
I mean, it's going to happen sometime and may not be in our lifetime or likely.
And is it the city's responsibility to make every home, uh, that is, which is most of our homes that are unreinforced, seismically stable? That costs anywhere between, you know, fifty to a hundred thousand dollars per home. Um, these are questions that we can ask as a community. The kind of bonding that it would take would outpace conversations we have had about parks and open space or affordable housing ongoing revenue, which we are doing now through our sales tax. Um, you know, those are decisions that we could make, but I think we need to take that to the voters and it would definitely outweigh or our ability from a bonding capacity to do a lot of other things that we should do.
What is the right role of law enforcement? Should we have more or less police presence?
Great question because I think that every city's most fundamental job is to keep its people safe. Residents and visitors alike. And if you aren't keeping your people safe, then, uh, that is, you're failing at your number one job. The city saw an increase in crime, as did the country in twenty-twenty, in the first two quarters of twenty-one. And we have seen a, an about-face since that time and it is not by chance. We also saw a decline in officer numbers. Where we have about five hundred sworn officers in Salt Lake City, we reached a low of ninety-one vacancies in the department at our lowest point. We also hadn't paid Salt Lake City Police Department at the top of state since the Didi Corradini administration. If you don't know when that was, it was a long time ago. It was before he was the mayor. And so we had a lot to address. We came up with a, a very diverse plan because crime is complex. We brought in more partners from the federal government, from the US Attorney, US Marshal, ATF, FBI, because our officers were taking criminals to the jail. And all too often, they either weren't admitted or they were back out on the street before their shifts were over. Time and time again, even felons. So we reached out for federal partners. Part of the, the role of policing is to get partners where you need them. And our federal partners have now put more than three hundred community impact felons behind federal bars. And they're serving an average of six years right now. That's part of the way we've been able to bring crime down in Salt Lake City fifteen percent. Violent crime is down twelve percent. And I know we're in District Four, but I think it's worth mentioning that on our west side in Districts One and Two, crime is down thirty, thirty percent in District One, twenty-nine percent in District Two. It's actually at its lowest point in more than a decade in Rose Park and Poplar Grove. So the way we're policing is changing dramatically. Civilians are on our police force now for the first time. We have a dozen civilians who can respond to non-criminal calls. Um, speaking to a comment earlier, police get called out to things that are not criminal in nature. We should be sending out non-certified police officers or people who work for the department. They can give you a case number if you need it, but they're not out there doing criminal activity. When the U game lets out, I don't want to pull patrol officers off of answering your calls to direct traffic out there in the street. These are the kind of activities our civilians are doing. Another thing is doubling the social workers that are in the police department, and we have done that. So we have a co-responder model of social workers who can go out on mental health calls, who build relationships with people in the community. And they end up diverting people who would otherwise be in the emergency room time and time again. And they end up being able to connect them with services. So diversified policing and doing so, while we have had an increase in call volume over the last three and a half years, we've driven down crime, crime across the city is down. Our officer numbers are back up and we've added twenty additional police officers. And for the first time since the nineties, we raised their pay to lead the state plus one percent, which ended up tipping off a series of other pay upgrades at departments across the state as they panicked. And we're going to, it is our outspoken intention to continue to lead the state plus one percent for all of our union workers in Salt Lake City, fire, police and, and Afsmi.
I'll ask you the bad question that I've asked everybody. Rank choice voting, you're going to vote for yourself first. Whose name would you put second?
Here's the fun part. Counselmember Petro is asking me to write her in. I just might do that actually. Um, uh, here's the great part, choices. We have choices. And, uh, for me, as you heard, considerate answers, I think, although indirect from the council members.
They were all indirect answers.
Council, council candidates. I know, but I'm saying that they, they talked about qualities who would be their second choice. And I can tell you unequivocally, I will not vote for either of these people in second place. My choice gets to be, I'm voting for one person because I will never take our city backwards. This is about tone. This race, we can talk about lots of issues, we do at every debate. We should, but ultimately this comes down to, do you want a builder or do you want a destroyer? Do you want somebody who can get things done or who mostly tries to get headlines and complaints? You're going to hear a lot of that in just a second. Salt Lake City's built four thousand affordable housing units in the last three and a half years. We finally have the state paying for homeless services with a winter overflow plan that's bigger than it's been since the Old Road Home was open. Six hundred beds opening starting on Monday. The state leading on affordable housing with a hundred and ten million in the last eighteen months, where they used to put hundreds of thousands, up to three million before. This is the kind of progress our capital city absolutely has to have, which is, we're not alone. We're not on an island. We can't afford to be on an island. We shouldn't be the state's center of all housing and all homeless services. We should see Sandy City voting to approve a hotel to be used for medically vulnerable population like they did on Tuesday. We should see West Valley City, who wouldn't even come to the table three years ago, who's hosting almost two hundred winter overflow beds. This is partnership and we deserve it. Because Salt Lake City, every city in the state doesn't have a penny for mental and behavioral health. That's the county and the Health Department. We cannot go this alone. We shouldn't. And finally, we are not. And unfortunately, those running against me would take us backwards to isolation. And you don't deserve to pay eighteen times more for affordable housing creation, which is what Mr. Anderson is proposing. Eighteen times. So instead of four thousand units, we would have opened less than three hundred with his plan. That's what we're talking about. So when you hear the big proposals, childcare for everyone, I've done some research on that. Actually, I've done a lot. We've talked about this a lot. How's he going to pay for that? Because of the last census? Let's just say kids preschool age only. He said childcare for everyone, let's just say preschool age only. At last census, we had just over eleven thousand, six hundred kids under the age of five. The cost of childcare for, for babies is fourteen hundred dollars on average. For a toddler, it's twelve hundred dollars a month, average. For young kids, it's about eight hundred dollars. So let's just say a thousand dollars. A thousand dollars a month, almost twelve thousand kids under five in this city. You do the math. And then get it through the City Council. And we know what his relation looks, relationship looks like with City Council, his own staff, the county, business owners, the state of Utah. So how are we going to pay for this? You don't deserve to pay and bail out. That's the most ironic part. For someone who loves to shake sticks at the state of Utah, really throw bombs, do litigation, he's bailing out the state of Utah by saying, we're going to build it all. We're going to do it ourselves, by ourselves. No. Homelessness happens everywhere in the state. Every city, every town, people lose their housing. And right now they get dropped off in Ogden, Salt Lake City or St. George. And finally the state's saying, that's not right. They've done their fair share. Step up Sandy, step up West Valley City, step up legislature. And they are, uh, we cannot go backwards. We should not pay and bail out the state of Utah. So I've, I've been in office almost four years. I don't think anyone can question what kind of a mayor I am. We've been through a lot as a community. Holy moly, we've been through a lot. And we've had the strongest downtown recovery in the nation. Hundred and thirty-nine percent more people coming into the downtown than there were in twenty-nineteen. We flipped the downtown economy. Instead of being just office people, getting lunch and going home, we're now primarily entertainment, food and beverage and recreation economy downtown. We've piloted a green loop downtown to connect five and a half miles encircling the downtown in our city streets and create sixty acres of park space. We passed the biggest parks investment the city has ever even considered. We're building the first new regional park in over sixty years at the old Raging Waters on Glendale, on the west side for the first time. The west side seeing investments they've never seen before. I mean, don't take us backwards. So what I've, I'm sure that we've had experiences, we've made decisions that you've had other opinions about. You know me, half of you have my phone number. I come to your community council meetings, we show up together. That's what this kind of work is. It's how do we keep going together even if we disagree on some things? Because we are moving forward. City is not perfect, but it's pretty great. And almost any data metric from crime, housing, homelessness, investment, creation of affordable housing, creation of permanent supportive housing, air quality, school bus passes for every single kid in the city, their parent and their teachers, more buses, more bus stops that are improved, electric bike rebates coming for you, east-west connections. Yeah, we're going forward. So please make your choices, whatever they might be. But I won't be voting for a number two this year.
Mayor, Mayor Menahal, thank you. That sounded like the campaign speech.
Thanks, Randall.
And last, but not least, former baron, Rocky Anderson.
Hello, Randall.
Hi.
Good to be with you, good to be with all of you.
Uh, I'll start out. What are your plans if you were elected mayor to make the city safer for all residents housed and unhoused?
This, this is an enormous issue. It's the number one job of city government and we have not been moving forward these past four years. When I go downtown, almost... When I go downtown, almost every single time, there is a, at least an awkward, if not very concerning or threatening incident. And we can't call the police. They don't show up. People have come to the attitude that they're not gonna show up, and if they do, it's gonna take them forever. Our police chief has doubled their goal for response times, and they're not even meeting that. When I was mayor and Chris Burbank, the chief of police, would tell you, we set a six-minute or less response time. And he was asked once, how is it that you did that when the city's got like seventeen-minute response times? And he said, well, one of the things that helped, Mayor Anderson called me on a regular basis to see how we were doing. And when the mayor, Menon Hall, was asked by a reporter, so what about these long response times and doubling the goal? Her response was, well, uh, that shouldn't be politically determined. She views her job as a political one. I view the job as mayor as being an administrative position where you make certain people are getting the job done because everybody in this community depends on it. You, the buck stops with you. She can't pass it off to the police chief. We don't elect the police chief. She appoints the police chief. And she's not overseeing that, nor is she overseeing filling the boards of this Police Civilian Review Board, which I created. And that's part of public safety, too. Are we safe all the way around in this community, including in terms of policing? You're not very safe if you're a black man, Ryan outlaw, and you're bleeding to death on an elevator floor, and two police come along more than twenty-five minutes later after a call came in. And then once they get there, even though they're trained in first aid and that training is renewed every year, they're standing there, looking at you, talking to you, never pull you out of the elevator, never get down, and put pressure on your wound. You're bleeding to death. The girlfriend is asking, so aren't you gonna do anything? And this is on the body count. One response was, what do you want us to do? Medical's on the way, meaning they're waiting for an ambulance. Another response was, we're not paramedics. Medical's on the way. They found those excuses. This man died two hours later. Ryan outlaw. Don't forget his name. And don't forget that he has a father who is wondering what in the world is happening in Salt Lake City when the police have this training and the first responders don't do anything? And the mayor, even before an investigation, and the chief of police, they had their mind made up. They fell right in line and said, we support these officers.
So what would you do if you were mayor in a situation like this?
If I were mayor, I would insist that there be full investigation and a quick one, not three-plus years, like in another case where a black man, uh, had a canine dog sicced on him even though he'd been fully compliant. And, and this, uh, this chief under this mayor has waited over three years, and it's still supposedly under investigation even though everything was on body count. I would, I, I would insist that our chief of police, as my chiefs when I was mayor did, they knew it was expected. You get the investigations done, you make determination. If somebody did something wrong, you exercise the correct degree of discipline and training and make things right and show the rest of the police department what the standards are. That's one thing I would do in terms of all of us as we travel amongst this community. Now homelessness is creeping in to this part of town. No, no part of our city is immune from this. The mayor keeps wanting to dodge her responsibilities. You heard her say it again tonight. Oh, it's West Valleys. It's, you know, nobody's taken the laboring war. And you don't find that in any other cities that have a homelessness problem like we have with the crime that we have. And when people are saying, oh, crime is down, let me ask you if you believe these statistics. Is it crime is down or they're not coming, they're not showing up, and they're not doing anything about it when they get there telling small business owners and residents, oh, the mayor has told us when these crimes are committed, just tell people to move along? And yesterday, I got a phone call from, uh, the owner of Mid-City Salon on Third South and be, uh, and between Main Street and West Temple. And she told me, she was so upset about it. I've known her for years. She said, we're closing shop. This is another business, along with South and Gallery, along with Latter Day Bright. They are leaving. These women could not put up with it anymore. The feces smeared on their windows, the assaults, the, uh, uh, at the salon. Three times they'd have, uh, they've had public masturbation incidents. The last time, the salon was full of their, uh, women employees and women clients. A man comes up broad afternoon, daylight, and masturbates in front of the entire salon. They immediately call nine-one-one. Nobody showed up. You wonder how they get to low crime rates? It's because they don't even respond. I had a friend who had a knife pulled on him by a homeless man who had broken into his car and stolen some property. He got the knife away, held the man down, three other people surrounded. My friend yelling at him, you can't touch us. And that signifies the sense of impunity. The sense that people have that they can do anything they want in what's basically become a pretty lawless city. When the police either won't show up or when they do, they just tell you to move along. And I've heard this from numerous businesses. None of us are safe it, when that is happening in our city. Well, he called the police, and twenty-eight minutes went by. He's holding the man down. And he kept track of the time. He finally let the man up and he ran off. After twenty-eight minutes, a police officer never showed up.
That leads to another question that, that one of our, uh, community members asked and said, would you keep or replace the current police chief?
I would replace the current police chief in a heartbeat. I think that he's shown poor leadership in our police department. I support our police. These people put everything on the line. And that doesn't mean that there aren't a few of them that give the rest of the police a bad name when they don't, don't conduct themselves properly, like the two men that sat and watched this man bleed to death, like the officer who's sicked his canine dog on, on the black man who was totally compliant. Uh, we see these incidents all the time. And there's not discipline. There's no accountability from this chief. You can't show me a case where he has engaged in, uh, uh, an expeditious investigation and disciplined the officer. You can't find one case where our mayor has spoken up against these abuses. So we need to stand by our police officers by making it clear. It's good for everybody that there is going to be proper discipline, that there are standards that are set, and the leadership in both the mayor's office and the chief of police. Uh, they are going to make certain that we, the citizens, all of us, and members of the police department, that there is a standard of excellent set of professionalism, and we got to reduce the incident, incidences of escalating encounters. And the first thing I would do out of the chute is absolutely prohibit the use of profanity, which you hear from some police officers all the time. This profanity automatically escalates encounters, and none of us should be subjected to it. So when I talk about in the community, I don't want to s- send the message that all homeless people are alike because everyone has a different story. There are so many people out there now because of the unaffordability of housing in Salt Lake that they weren't able to stay in their housing. And then everything falls apart. Then they can't go to work because they're, they're dirty, there's, there are no showers. Uh, this mayor wouldn't even provide toilets. I had a long correspondence with her and your council member about trying to work downtown on Third South and Main Street. And all the feces, all the urine, uh, some of the violence, people who had untreated mental illness, people who were engaging in open drug use and open cell of drugs, and never any accountability. And I'm not somebody, ever, because I set up the, the most comprehensive restorative justice program in the country when I was mayor. It's all about not focusing on punishment or humiliation or retribution. It's about solving problems. And I'll tell you, the best thing that ever happened to my sister, who amazingly, to all of us still to this day, became a crack cocaine addict. The best thing that ever happened to her, and she would say the same thing if she were with us today. She died years later of ALS. But she got off of crack cocaine for one reason, and I think it would have killed her, and I think it would have wiped out her fa- family's finances, that things had continued on. The best thing that ever happened was she was arrested. The laws were applied. And she was brought before a judge, and she had to make the choice. And, and we gave people that choice when I was mayor in Drug Court. Are you gonna turn your life around? Are you gonna get into treatment? We're gonna follow up with you. And then, if you do that, you're not gonna carry a sentence around with you and have that burden. You, the charges will be dismissed against you. Your plea of guilty will be held in abeyance. And Dr. Rocher, down the director of the Other Side Academy, he'll tell you the same thing. But it was him who was leading a life of crime. Everything was falling apart. He'll tell you absolutely what saved his life was having to make the choice. Are you gonna go the usual criminal justice route? Are you gonna finally turn your life around and be able to help other people?
Who's Odyssey House?
This man is turning so many lives around. And Odyssey House, I was out there just yesterday, actually, speaking to a group of people, and it was one of the most inspiring things you've ever seen. And I've been to Odyssey House for years on occasion to visit and to speak and, and to get, uh, and to meet people who are being treated there. I met one person after the other who's, who told me their stories of recovery, and they were excited about life. They have passion about moving forward. You're not going to be able to get in that position if we continue to have our police at the behest of our mayor just telling people, move along. Uh, I called, we had a guy shooting up in front of the Judge Building, just off of Main Street and Third South, every morning. I called the police, not because I wanted him to go to jail, because I wanted him to get, get treatment, and I also wanted to save this community from having this go on, uh, on our public streets. That's not good for any of us. We gotta have compassion for ourselves, for all residents, for businesses, and members of the homeless community, uh, and those who may not be homeless but who have drug problems. The greatest compassion we can show is offering a helping hand to help turn lives around and help save them from these lives of, of addiction. By the way, speaking of safety, uh, when I met with these folks at, at Odyssey House yesterday, I was telling them about how our mayor turned her back on hundreds of people last winter. She talks about safety and for, for the people in our community. Well, the, the members of our unsheltered community don't seem to be in her category of people because she turned her back absolutely on that entire community of unsheltered people. We, all of the shelters, including the overflow shelter, were full. Day in and day out. I was calling. I was looking at the city's dashboard. Hundred percent full. They had nowhere to go. They were freezing. Some of them literally frozen to death. At least twelve that we know of froze to death. They, they, because of exposure directly related to this mayor's failure to provide even temporary shelter. And she placed a moratorium and then got the council to place a moratorium on any more permanent shelter in Salt Lake City before last winter, which seemed pretty cruel, but okay. If it's not gonna be permanent, you wanna take a look at things and have this analysis paralysis that this administration is so well-known for, but at least get them inside. How can you watch people dying on our streets? And so many people who had amputations of fingers, toes, and lower limbs. Two people that I know of, Rebel and Marquis, have the bottom parts of their legs amputated below the knee because they were freezing. They suffered from, from severe frostbite, and they had to have amputations.
Rocky, we've got to move along because people want a couple, a couple of other questions answered.
Okay.
Time is running out. Okay? Uh, first of all, I need to ask you, rank choice voting, who would you place second?
I, I would place Michael Valentine second, and I'll tell you why. That probably comes as a big surprise because Michael and I have had our times together. But I actually worked with Michael to try to save the Pantagias initially. And, uh, I kinda moved away from it because I didn't see a business plan. Uh, I didn't, I didn't see that it was going to be successful. And I also knew the mayor was absolutely refusing to meet with him. Uh, she, she meets with people once a month for ten minutes apiece. That means six people she'll condescend to talk to. That's her notion of transparency and accessibility. But Michael has the values. And I think the most important thing is to look at what people have done with their lives. Do, is what they say when they're running for office consonant with what they've done in their private lives? Uh, did we see the passion for what they talk about now? Demonstrated in their private lives? And when it comes to values and the manifestation of those values, through action or inaction, there could be no greater difference between me and Mayor Menon Hall. I would never, ever close the doors on anybody that's freezing in a bitter, cold winter and suffering as our unsheltered community did last year. I would never promise to the people of this city, oh, by the way, we're gonna set aside all this money, two million dollars, uh, for the Old Ramada Inn, plus a million, more than a million from the RDA. Let's set that side, that money aside and let the community know we're doing it because there's, they're going to have this hundred ninety-seven units built out and ready for occupancy by last April. Do you remember her press conferences? You don't ever hear press conferences when the deal dies, and it's been months since any construction's been going on. Apparently, she didn't know about it. We held a press conference out there to show the whole community, this deal is dead. It was supposed to be ready for occupancy last April so there would be this flawless transition from the Winter Overflow Shelter Inn to the Ramada Inn. And it did not happen. Broken promises after broken promises. And she'll say, oh, the developer flaked out. No, you flaked out because here we are, six months after it was supposed to be open for occupancy, and you haven't even explored. You haven't put the money into, into anybody who actually can do the job. And I would say Switchpoint is one of those developers that is highly successful. Don't ever get the idea that nothing works. Switchpoint, uh, they've got the Point at Fair Park and the Point Airport, about two hundred units between them. It's magnificent. Well, the city put in a little money, a fraction of the money, and the mayor claims full credit for those two hundred units. There weren't any others. And there is one now in Sandy that's being built for medically vulnerable population. But those two hundred units that we were promised for Ramada Inn are gone. And she promised it to all of us. The unsheltered community was counting on it. By the way, if you put two people in per unit, that would have covered almost everybody that was unsheltered according to the point in time count for this year, which was four hundred and thirty-five unsheltered people in our community. I think there has been such a cavalier disregard for those who are most in need. And then it, 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 the ramifications of that is that businesses are leaving our city. Residents are left, uh, feeling unsafe. You can't go, you can't send your kids to the parks when you have all these encampments. I would, and you say, what would I do? I would get rid of every encampment in the city by providing a sanctioned camp and shelter. And I'd do it remotely, away from neighborhoods and businesses. I'd prefer someplace like Wing, the old Wing Point Golf Course. And then you asked earlier about the, the scattered shelters. The scattered shelter proposition was a political solution where council members could say, you take one over here, we'll take one over here, we'll put... It was the dumbest idea, a total failure. It undermined those neighborhoods. A business next to the Gell Miller Center has suffered over sixty thousand dollars worth of damage. The neighborhoods have been undermined, and the people who are living there are farther and farther away from the homeless providers like the Bishop Wiegand Center, like St. Vincent de Paul.
We're out of time.
And the Forest Street Clinic. Thank you very much for handling.
Thank you, Rocky. Thanks, all of you.
First of all, thank you to all of you for staying and listening. I hope this has helped you with some of your thinking and what you would like to further ask. Um, I hope that all of you will take the opportunity to vote when you get out. Um, I wanna especially thank all the candidates who have come and Randall for coming and helping us. I wanna thank Kobe Creative, who has been filming this for us. And this will be available on our community, um, Facebook channel and also our, uh, what am I trying to say? Not Facebook. YouTube, yeah, there we go. YouTube channel. And also to each of the community councils and anyone else who's interested, we'll make sure this is available so other people can fast forward and revisit things. Um, just really appreciate all of you. If there's anything else that you'd be interested in, please send it into emails. We'll see if we can get some additional answers for you. And thank you for staying.